All right, I apologize before the meeting gets started, I left. I was downstairs, I'm swearing in, I'll be right back.
Counselmember Kirkpatrick will lead us in a word of prayers as we begin.
Let us pray. Dear Lord Jesus, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing this wonderful opportunity and trusting me to be a part of this council. Jesus, let us all be reminded that we are public servants and to put our personal agendas aside to work for the betterment of our city through honest, transparent leadership. I ask you to bless our leaders and guide them by your Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, I ask that you protect Tyler Maxi and those who put themselves on the front line for us daily. God give Tyler strength and wisdom to make wise decisions in protecting the citizens of Glasgow from harm and to do so in a way that honors you. I pray that you would create a hunger and thirst for righteousness in all of us, Father God. Lord, I pray and ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Beautiful. If you would please call the rolling the bills. Witcher. Dickinson. Gauntz. Oliver.
Here.
Honeycutt.
Here.
Hammer.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Lowery.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Thank you. You have in front of you a copy of the minutes from the March 13th council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Norris in second.
Second.
Counselmember Kirkpatrick. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is we are going to swear in Officer Tyler Maxi, who has just completed his training in Richmond, and we'll do that right here if you don't mind.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Tyler Maxi. He is a resident of Glasgow. He grew up here in Glasgow. He graduated Glasgow High School in 2002, whereupon he enlisted in the U.S. Army Reserves. He served eight years in the reserves, achieving the rank of E5 Sergeant. He graduated from Western Kentucky University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in 2015, and he just recently graduated the Criminal Justice Training Center in Richmond, Kentucky on March the 17th, 2017. He is the father of four children, and his mom Vivian is here tonight to pin his badge on.
Thank you, Officer Maxi, for your willingness to serve this community. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2016-2017.
This ordinance receives into various general fund accounts set forth in Section 1 through Section 4 as specified. $2,987.50 insurance proceeds for a wrecked vehicle that will be replaced. $3,048.24 in contributions for police supplies and ammunition. $8,925 in surplus property sale proceeds. $3,200 in fire commission grant monies. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $1,742,120, which is to be transferred to various expense accounts set forth in Section 5 of the ordinance for the energy savings project. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the total sum of $3,048, which is to be transferred to various police accounts set forth in Section 6 of the ordinance for police supplies and ammunition. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $13,500, which is to be transferred to a police vehicle account set forth in Section 7 of the ordinance. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $5,900, which is to be transferred to a fire department account set forth in Section 8 of the ordinance. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $3,124, which is to be transferred to a fire department account set forth in Section 9 of the ordinance for truck repairs. Lastly, it appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $418,225, which is to be transferred to a Plaza Theater Cultural Improvements account in Section 10 of the ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Honeycutt in second. Counselmember Gross, any discussion? This is the second reading, this will be a roll call reading, if you would please. Oliver.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Gauntz.
Yes.
Hammer.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Lowery.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is we are going to swear in Officer Tyler Maxi, who has just completed his training in Richmond, and we'll do that right here if you don't mind.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Tyler Maxi. He is a resident of Glasgow. He grew up here in Glasgow. He graduated Glasgow High School in 2002, whereupon he enlisted in the U.S. Army Reserves. He served eight years in the reserves, achieving the rank of E5 Sergeant. He graduated from Western Kentucky University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in 2015, and he just recently graduated the Criminal Justice Training Center in Richmond, Kentucky on March the 17th, 2017. He is the father of four children, and his mom Vivian is here tonight to pin his badge on.
Tyler Maxi.
Thank you, Officer Maxi, for your willingness to serve this community. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2016-2017.
This ordinance receives into various general fund accounts set forth in Section 1 through Section 4 as specified. $2,987.50 insurance proceeds for a wrecked vehicle that will be replaced. $3,048.24 in contributions for police supplies and ammunition. $8,925 in surplus property sale proceeds. $3,200 in fire commission grant monies. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $1,742,120, which is to be transferred to various expense accounts set forth in Section 5 of the ordinance for the energy savings project. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the total sum of $3,048, which is to be transferred to various police accounts set forth in Section 6 of the ordinance for police supplies and ammunition. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $13,500, which is to be transferred to a police vehicle account set forth in Section 7 of the ordinance. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $5,900, which is to be transferred to a fire department account set forth in Section 8 of the ordinance. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $3,124, which is to be transferred to a fire department account set forth in Section 9 of the ordinance for truck repairs. Lastly, it appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $418,225, which is to be transferred to a Plaza Theater Cultural Improvements account in Section 10 of the ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Honeycutt in second. Counselmember Gross, any discussion? This is the second reading, this will be a roll call reading, if you would please. Oliver.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Lowery.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance related to social host and the consumption of alcohol by minors.
This ordinance applies to Section 1, certain terms, children being at the age of 12 or under the age of 15, or in the course of the household, or crisis, and response costs, creates a duty for a person to control the traces, including the posts, or is, or allows the adversary to have the traces, and increases the steps to prevent the consumption of alcohol by minors, and the actions, and the overall risk of step, including, which includes the verification of the age, and the class of activities. It makes it unlawful for any person having control and traces to help the post, or get, or allow the adversary to take police antipraces, where this point, a minor consumes alcohol or drinks, and the person having control of the traces, who knows, or reasonably should have, that a minor is consuming alcohol or drinks, and the person takes all the risk of steps, which is to prevent, and such should not happen. This ordinance makes it unlawful for a person under 21 to consume alcohol, and set his drinking habits, and creates a presumption that alcohol has been consumed by that person, given alcohol concentration, or its exposure, or is measured by scientific tests, or has been moved up, and two hours. Initial contact by law enforcement. It outlines the exceptions to that, those being for alcohol use that occurs exclusively between a minor and his or her parent or legal guardian as permitted by statute. It does not apply to any Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control licensee at any premises regulated by the Department of Alcohol Beverage and Control, and it does not apply to conduct involving the use of alcoholic beverages for legally protected religious activities. This ordinance also states that whenever a person having control of the residence or premises is present at the residence or premises at the time that a minor or minors obtains, possesses, or consumes any alcoholic beverage, it shall be prima facie evidence that such adult had the knowledge, or should have had the knowledge, that the minor or minors obtained, possessed, or consumed an alcoholic beverage at the party. The penalty for a violation of this ordinance shall be as follows. Persons found violating the ordinance shall be subject to the following penalties. A fine of $250 for the first offense, and a fine of $500 for the second and all subsequent offenses. For any offense, neither the fine nor the appropriate court cost shall be suspended. This enforcement of the ordinance shall be by citation issued by a police officer, and if any part of this ordinance shall be held invalid, such parts shall be deemed severable, and the invalidity shall not affect the remaining parts of the ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
And then is $250 and $500 enough punishment for someone that is directing children or violence? You know, I may think that, I may be the only one, I'm fine with that, I just want to see.
One question I've got, I mean, it says for a party consisting of two or more, if I'm at home asleep at my residence, and my son has a friend over, am I going to get a $200? That's by definition is a party, isn't it? And...
It says knowingly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Knowingly is the key, yes.
Okay.
Other question?
Does a minor already a law go?
There is a, there is a crime called unlawful transaction with a minor that deals with the distribution of alcohol. This tightens it up a little bit, I suppose, with it being in the context of a, of a party or gathering supervised by adults.
This may be a question for the chief. Is this pretty common as far as other municipalities, other communities, as far as the language?
Yes, sir. There's currently like 30 states that have a state KRS or a state law. The state of Kentucky doesn't have a KRS, but over 28 municipalities and counties have passed these. This is where the majority of the language came from, that, that I felt fit Glasgow, and Mr. Alexander went over it, and he, he agreed. The, this is just, this helps complement the current KRS about supplying alcohol to a minor. This is, this is to keep people from saying, it's okay to, come on over to the house, it's okay for you to drink here as long as you stay here, you spend the night or something. And it's to hint, gives us an upper hand on the loud parties and the out of control parties. And of course, in, when he read the ordinance, it said you had to have, you know, knowingly, this isn't designed for the parents that let their kids sneak somebody in and, and drink a beer, so.
It appearing that Terry L. Thomas, Danny Thomas, and Tammy Lou Hearn, owners and applicants, have requested a zoning change for the property located at the intersection of Beaver Trail and Veterans Outer Loop, Highway 68, and this is not the actual Highway 68, this is the truck route for Highway 68. The actual highway number for the state is actually 3160, but for purposes of this ordinance, it, it just identifies it as, as Highway 68 intersection. Containing 7.485 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow from agricultural classification to I-1 light industrial classification, a schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference. A trial type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on February 21 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property herein after described be rezoned from agriculture classification to light industrial classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council, and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. It is therefore ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section 1. The findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2. The property located at the intersection of Beaver Trail and Veterans Outer Loop intersection in Glasgow containing 7.485 acres more or less is rezoned from an agricultural classification to light industrial classification, the real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3. All future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Witcher in second.
Second.
Counselmember Neal, any discussion?
What would light industrial represent?
Kevin, if you would, Mr. Myers here from, from Planning and Zoning, and he can give us a better description than I can.
Yes, sir. The light industrial is for light manufacturing and light fabrication. Something that's pertaining to that might be something like BR Tire, where they do quite a bit of mechanical work. Some light fabrication with regards to warehousing, small mini storage compartments are allowed in an I-1 zoning, but it's not intended to be that of a heavy industrial like a, like a AMAC or, or something to that effect. The, the manufacturing process isn't as great with the amount of trucks, tractor trailers that might be entering into that facility.
Other discussion? Have a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a, another first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning. This one says 1163 Trojan Trail, that's actually the owner's address. The body of the ordinance is correct, is at Stage 175 Bishop Lane. It appearing that Southside Baptist Church owner applicant by and through its trustee, Keith Weaver, has requested a zoning change for the property located at 175 Bishop Lane in Glasgow, containing 10.242 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow from R1 low-density residential classification to agricultural classification. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on February 21 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property described be rezoned from low-density residential R1 classification to agricultural classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council, and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1. The findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2. The property located at the intersection of Beaver Trail and Veterans Outer Loop intersection in Glasgow containing 7.485 acres more or less is rezoned from an agricultural classification to light industrial classification, the real property covered by this ordinance being particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3. All future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Witcher in second.
Second.
Counselmember Neal, any discussion?
What would light industrial represent?
Kevin, if you would, Mr. Myers here from, from Planning and Zoning, and he can give us a better description than I can.
Yes, sir. The light industrial is for light manufacturing and light fabrication. Something that's pertaining to that might be something like BR Tire, where they do quite a bit of mechanical work. Some light fabrication with regards to warehousing, small mini storage compartments are allowed in an I-1 zoning, but it's not intended to be that of a heavy industrial like a, like a AMAC or, or something to that effect. The, the manufacturing process isn't as great with the amount of trucks, tractor trailers that might be entering into that facility.
Other discussion? Have a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a, another first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning. This one says 1163 Trojan Trail, that's actually the owner's address. The body of the ordinance is correct, is at Stage 175 Bishop Lane. It appearing that Southside Baptist Church owner applicant by and through its trustee, Keith Weaver, has requested a zoning change for the property located at 175 Bishop Lane in Glasgow, containing 10.242 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow from R1 low-density residential classification to agricultural classification. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on February 21 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property described be rezoned from low-density residential R1 classification to agricultural classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council, and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1. The findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2. The property located at the intersection of Beaver Trail and Veterans Outer Loop intersection in Glasgow containing 7.485 acres more or less is rezoned from an agricultural classification to light industrial classification, the real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3. All future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 31, 1991. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Neal in second.
Second.
Counselmember Neal, any discussion?
What would light industrial represent?
Kevin, if you would, Mr. Myers here from, from Planning and Zoning, and he can give us a better description than I can.
Yes, sir. The light industrial is for light manufacturing and light fabrication. Something that's pertaining to that might be something like BR Tire, where they do quite a bit of mechanical work. Some light fabrication with regards to warehousing, small mini storage compartments are allowed in an I-1 zoning, but it's not intended to be that of a heavy industrial like a, like a AMAC or, or something to that effect. The, the manufacturing process isn't as great with the amount of trucks, tractor trailers that might be entering into that facility.
Other discussion? Have a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a, another first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning. This one says 1163 Trojan Trail, that's actually the owner's address. The body of the ordinance is correct, is at Stage 175 Bishop Lane. It appearing that Southside Baptist Church owner applicant by and through its trustee, Keith Weaver, has requested a zoning change for the property located at 175 Bishop Lane in Glasgow, containing 10.242 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow from R1 low-density residential classification to agricultural classification. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on February 21 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property described be rezoned from low-density residential R1 classification to agricultural classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council, and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1. The findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2. The property located at the intersection of Beaver Trail and Veterans Outer Loop intersection in Glasgow containing 7.485 acres more or less is rezoned from an agricultural classification to light industrial classification, the real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3. All future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Witcher in second.
Second.
Counselmember Neal, any discussion?
What would light industrial represent?
Kevin, if you would, Mr. Myers here from, from Planning and Zoning, and he can give us a better description than I can.
Yes, sir. The light industrial is for light manufacturing and light fabrication. Something that's pertaining to that might be something like BR Tire, where they do quite a bit of mechanical work. Some light fabrication with regards to warehousing, small mini storage compartments are allowed in an I-1 zoning, but it's not intended to be that of a heavy industrial like a, like a AMAC or, or something to that effect. The, the manufacturing process isn't as great with the amount of trucks, tractor trailers that might be entering into that facility.
Other discussion? Have a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution declaring certain police department property as surplus? Be it hereby resolved by the city of Glasgow, Kentucky... I believe I skipped ahead one, I think, Mayor. You got it. Do you... Okay. Here we go. Thank you. Now, with the council's help, I got the right resolution. All right, this is a resolution by the city of Glasgow. That's not, that's the grants. No, that's what, we had that too. Yeah, we can do that, if we need to. Not a pressing issue that we surplus this property, I don't think, is it, Chief?
This is, um...
We can wait till our next meeting to do that, when we have that in front of us?
Yes, sir.
Very well, well, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Apologize for that. Next item is a resolution for the city of Glasgow to make application for a grant for household and hazardous waste management. Be it hereby resolved by the city of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the city of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of $10,500 administered through the Kentucky Pride Fund Household Hazardous Waste Management, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of funding, the city of Glasgow hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day for the residents of Barron County. This is a 7525 in-kind match grant, and the applicant shall provide matching funds of the total cost of the project, or $2,688 if received. The amount of the total project would be $13,188. Be it further resolved by the city of Glasgow that Mayor Dick Doty shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for the grant. Having heard the resolution, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Neal, second.
Second.
Counselmember Witcher, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have three municipal orders, the first of which is reappointing Brian Clemmons to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. On order of the mayor, Brian Clemmons is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. This appointment shall be for a two-year term, expiring March 31, 2019, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council. Having heard the order read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Gross in second.
Second.
Counselmember Lowery, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have three municipal orders, the first of which is reappointing Brian Clemmons to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. On order of the mayor, Brian Clemmons is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. This appointment shall be for a two-year term, expiring March 31, 2019, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council. Having heard the order read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Neal in second.
Second.
Counselmember Gross, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, this municipal order, reappointing Betty Herbert to the Historic Preservation Committee. On order of the mayor, Betty Herbert is hereby reappointed as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. Betty Herbert's term shall be for two years, expiring March 31, 2019, and subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council. Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Neal in second.
Second.
Counselmember Gross, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, this municipal order, reappointing Betty Herbert to the Historic Preservation Committee. On order of the mayor, Betty Herbert is hereby reappointed as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. Betty Herbert's term shall be for two years, expiring March 31, 2019, and subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council. Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve? Counselmember Neal in second.
Second.
Counselmember Gross, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, this municipal order, reappointing Betty Herbert to the Historic Preservation Committee. On order of the mayor, Betty Herbert is hereby reappointed as a member of the Historic is present at the residence or premises at the time that a minor or minors obtains, possesses, or consumes any alcoholic beverage, it shall be prima facie evidence that such adult had the knowledge, or should have had the knowledge, that the minor or minors obtained, possessed, or consumed an alcoholic beverage at the party. The penalty for a violation of this ordinance shall be as follows. Persons found violating the ordinance shall be subject to the following penalties. A fine of $250 for the first offense and a fine of $500 for the second and all subsequent offenses. For any offense, neither the fine nor the appropriate court cost shall be suspended. This enforcement of the ordinance shall be by citation issued by a police officer, and if any part of this ordinance shall be held invalid, such parts shall be deemed severable and the invalidity shall not affect the remaining parts of the ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
And then is $250 and $500 enough punishment for someone that is directing children around? You know, I may think it, I may be the only one, I'm fine with that, I just want to see...
One question I've got, I mean, it says for a party consists of two or more, if I'm at home asleep at my residence and my son has a friend over, am I going to get a 200? That's by definition is a party, isn't it?
It says knowingly.
Yeah.
Okay.
The knowingly is the key, yes.
Okay.
Other question?
There is a, there is a crime called unlawful transaction with a minor that deals with the distribution of alcohol. This tightens it up a little bit, I suppose, with it being in the context of a, of a party or gathering supervised by adults.
This may be a question for the chief. Is this pretty common as far as other municipalities, other communities, as far as the language?
Yes, sir. There's currently like 30 states that have a state KRS or a state law. The state of Kentucky doesn't have a KRS, but over 28 municipalities and counties have passed these. This is where the majority of the language came from that, that I felt fit Glasgow, and Mr. Alexander went over it and he, he agreed. This is just, this helps complement the current KRS about supplying alcohol to a minor. This is, this is to keep people from saying, "It's okay to, come on over to the house. It's okay for you to drink here as long as you stay here, you spend the night," or something. And it's to, gives us an upper hand on the loud parties and the out of control parties. And of course, in, when he read the ordinance, it said you had to have, you know, knowingly, this isn't designed for the parents that let their kids sneak somebody in and, and drink a beer, so.
It appearing that Terry L. Thomas, Danny Thomas, and Tammy Lou Hearn, owners and applicants, have requested a zoning change for the property located at the intersection of Bieber Trail and Veterans Outer Loop, Highway 68, and this is not the actual Highway 68, this is the truck route for Highway 68. The actual highway number for the state is actually 3160, but for purposes of this ordinance, it, it just identifies it as Highway 68 intersection. Containing 7.485 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow from agricultural classification to I-1 light industrial classification. A schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached hereto as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. A trial type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on February 21 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property herein after described be rezoned from agriculture classification to light industrial classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. It is therefore ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached hereto as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2, the property located at the intersection of Bieber Trail and Veterans Outer Loop intersection in Glasgow containing 7.485 acres more or less is rezoned from an agricultural classification to light industrial classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Witcher in second. Councilmember Neal, any discussion?
What would light industrial represent?
Kevin, if you would, Mr. Myers here from, from Planning and Zoning, and he can give us a better description than I can.
Yes, sir. The light industrial is for light manufacturing and light fabrication. Something that's pertaining to that might be something like BR Tire, where they do quite a bit of mechanical work. Some light fabrication with regards to warehousing, small mini storage compartments are allowed in an I-1 zoning, but it's not intended to be that of a heavy industrial like a, like a AMAC or, or something to that effect. The, the manufacturing process isn't as great with the amount of trucks, tractor trailers that might be entering into that facility.
Other discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a, another first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning. This one says 1163 Trojan Trail, that's actually the owner's address. The body of the ordinance is correct, is at stage 175 Bishop Lane.
It appearing that Southside Baptist Church owner applicant by and through its trustee, Keith Weaver, has requested a zoning change for the property located at 175 Bishop Lane in Glasgow, containing 10.242 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow from R1 low-density residential classification to agricultural classification. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached hereto as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on February 21 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property described to be rezoned from low-density residential R1 classification to agricultural classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached hereto as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2, the property located at 175 Bishop Lane in Glasgow, containing 10.242 acres more or less is rezoned from R1 to agricultural classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 31, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Having heard the ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Neal in second. Councilmember Gross, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution declaring certain police department property as surplus?
Be it hereby resolved by the city of Glasgow, Kentucky... I think I skipped ahead one there.
Now, with the council's help, I got the right resolution. All right, this is a resolution by the city of Glasgow. That's not, that's the grant.
It's a House of House.
No, that's what, we had that too.
Yeah, we can do that if we need to.
Not a pressing issue that we surplus this property, I don't think, is it, chief? We can wait till our next meeting to do that, when we have that in front of us?
Yes, sir.
Very well. Well, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Apologize for that. Next item is a resolution for the city of Glasgow to make application for a grant for household and hazardous waste management.
Be it hereby resolved by the city of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the city of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of $10,500 administered through the Kentucky Pride Fund Household Hazardous Waste Management, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of funding the city of Glasgow hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day for the residents of Barron County. This is a 75-25 in-kind match grant, and the applicant shall provide matching funds of the total cost of the project, or $2,688 if received. The amount of the total project would be $13,188. Be it further resolved by the city of Glasgow that Mayor Dick Doty shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for the grant.
Having heard the resolution, do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Neal, second. Councilmember Witcher, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have three municipal orders, the first of which is reappointing Brian Clemmons to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board.
On order of the mayor, Brian Clemmons is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. This appointment shall be for a two-year term, expiring March 31, 2019, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council.
Having heard the order read, do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Gross in second. Councilmember Lowry, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is municipal order reappointing Betty Herbert to the Historic Preservation Committee.
On order of the mayor, Betty Herbert is hereby reappointed as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. Betty Herbert's term shall be for two years, expiring March 31, 2019, and subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council.
Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Norris in second. Councilmember Hammer, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Lastly, municipal order reappointing Jane Baker to the Historic Preservation Committee.
On order of the mayor, Jane Baker is hereby reappointed as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. Jane Baker's term shall be for two years, expiring March 31, 2019, and subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council.
Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Neal in second by Councilmember Gross, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? The motion carries. It's all that we have on the agenda for tonight. I have a few announcements. First of which is country music legend John Anderson will be performing at the Plaza Theater on Saturday, April the 1st. It'll be at 7:30, and tickets are still available for that, but there are a few. Contact the Plaza Theater for those tickets, or you can get those online. The Cadillac III will be performing at the Plaza Theater on Saturday, May the 20th at 8:00 PM. Those tickets go on sale Friday, March the 31st at 10:00 AM. They're priced at $25 and $30. For further details, you can contact the Plaza Theater. The Plaza Theater also has a new and revamped website. You can visit their new site at historicplaza.com. You can still continue to use your old address, plaza.org, and that will redirect you automatically to that new site. Are there any other announcements? Yes. Make a motion to take that off of the table? Yes. So is that your motion?
Yes.
Have a motion to...
Suspend the rules first, for the one item.
Correct. Need a motion to suspend the rules to add one item to the agenda. Have a motion by Councilmember Gross. Second by Councilmember Lowry. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Now, you may...
I'd like to make a motion to bring both.
Bring off the table.
Bring off the table, Peter McLean, as to be nominated for the electric plant board for the director.
Very well. Have a motion to bring that item off the table? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Lowry has second. Any, no, that's a non-debatable motion, excuse me. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. So we will bring that off the table? You have that?
Yes.
On order of the mayor, Pete McLean is hereby appointed as a director for the Glasgow Electric Plant Board. Ms. McLean's appointment shall be for a four-year term, expiring January 31, 2021. This appointment fills a board position that expired January 31, 2017, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council.
Having heard the motion read, do... No, we have a...
You have a motion?
A motion? And a second? All in favor?
Can I, can I have a clarification?
Yes.
Just from, from...
Yeah, for discussion, yes.
Just a clarification. If this is voted down, it still stays on the table?
No, there's already been a motion to take it off the table.
If it doesn't pass?
No. It, this, this agenda item has been taken off the table for consideration. There's been a motion to approve the appointment and a second, and we're in the discussion period for whether or not to approve that appointment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say something, please. I think it's a bad idea to add people to the board while we're, have this going on with what's going on with them and looking at have they neglected their duties or not. But another thing that, about Petey, from, I've met her, I know her, she's a wonderful person, outstanding character, there's no question about any of that, but she's not an electrical engineer or electrical contractor, and that's who I think it needs to be the next person, type person appointed to the Plant Board Board. And for that reason, I will vote no on that. But it's, it's not a reflection on her character, but it is a reflection on her electrical experience.
May I just, to be clear, how many electrical engineers are on the board as we speak now?
I'm aware of none.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Roll call vote, if you would, please.
Hammer?
No.
Norris?
No.
Gross?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
No.
Kirkpatrick?
No.
Witcher?
No.
Oliver?
No.
Neal?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Gauntz?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
The motion does not pass.
Concerning this, one of the things that was brought up at the last meeting, and I'm really glad Mr. Honeycutt said this, is I believe you were asked, Mayor, if we had any kind of list of qualifications for the next person who sat on the electric plant board. So based on what Mr. Honeycutt said, is it possible for you within the next two weeks to find an electrical engineer that you might nominate if that's one of the qualifications that we want for the next person who sits on the electric plant board?
I don't know if that's possible or not, but again, if, if we look at the, I think the process is for the, for the mayor to make that appointment and for this group to confirm, so I think those guidelines as to who will be appointed and not would, would rest in the mayor's office and...
Not ours. So we can expect sometime around April 24th, a month from now, for you to, to be able to give us a recommendation?
I'll do my best, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And in fairness to Ms. McLean, can she be here at the next city council meeting?
I think that'll be fine.
I mean, not to be on the agenda, but just to be here. I mean, I just don't want to break any rules that I don't, I'm not aware of.
Not aware of any rules that she can't, that she can't address?
Yeah, I know. If I could also ask one more question of my fellow councilmen. Based on the memo we received from Mr. Basil, it is his comment that here at some point in April, he would like to recommend to us which issue seemed to be the most significant, and at that point, if we desire to proceed, we will vote to set a hearing date. Is there someone among us who would like to speak to Mr. Basil to set a time for him to come in prior to that vote, so that he might speak to us during some kind of session? I would hate for all 11 of us here tonight to start calling his office tomorrow to schedule a meeting, if someone wanted to do that. I just think it would be appropriate for us to have all the knowledge we need before we make a vote, because I think that's sometimes been a deficiency on all of our parts, not having all of our facts together.
At our last meeting, we were asked if we wanted to speak to him, we could call him.
Yes.
We had several that we've already met with him and talked to him about what was going on in this letter that he sent.
As long as you don't have a quorum.
Everybody on this side has already met with him.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess I'm on the wrong side of the table. Sorry.
You're on the wrong side, it was just mentioned that we could call him. I have his number, and I've got the memo. So thank you for letting me know.
I believe Patrick, haven't you met with him as well?
I have. I just, my only question would be in the last, second to last paragraph, says this memo is provided to be sure I'm pursuing your goals in a manner you find acceptable. The way I read this, and Rich, you can interpret, the way I read this is he's writing it to the city council, and it would probably be advantageous on any type of litigation that the goals of ours would be similarly, or at least maybe we would understand what the goals he's laid out in this letter would be. And, and I have met with him, and he was very kind and, and, you know, I think I've got an idea of what his goals are, but I don't know if, I've got the same interpretation that all 12 people have, or all 11.
I'll just caution the council that if you, if you're going to have a meeting, there needs to be proper notice of it if you're going to have the quorum of the council present. And if, if...
It can't be a session with no, no action taken.
As long as there's notice, as long as there's notice made, we could all meet with him, true?
Yeah.
We can all meet with him as long as there's notice made.
Well, I'm not so sure that is correct. I think it's got to be to meet under certain guidelines. Is that right, Rich, or am I off base?
Unless there's a specific exception to the open meetings, any meeting that, that has a quorum of the council present is an open meeting that must be given notice for. And at present, I'm not aware of any exception to that open meeting.
Is that with an agenda?
Yes. When you have a special meeting, the notice has to contain, has to contain the date, time, location, and it has to have the agenda attached to the special meeting.
Would this qualify for a, a meeting concerning pending litigation?
I'm not aware of any pending litigation right now.
Okay, so the hearing he speaks of in this letter would not qualify as something... I just think it would be really nice if we could all sit down as a group and all hear the information at the same time, instead of getting small bits of pieces of information here and there. And I would love for Mr. Basil to have the opportunity to do all the work he's done, and it's obvious from the information he shared that he is doing his due diligence to get all the information he can, and he's speaking to all the people he can. And I have no doubt that he is doing an upstanding job of this. I would just like for all of us to, to be together so that we can hear everything at the same time, instead of small pods getting pieces of information as he does.
I'm, I'm not even in disagreement, I mean, I, I'm fine if everybody disagrees with me, but I think for the citizens of Glasgow to spend $20,000, we, they at least know what the goals we set forth are. And I, you know, I mean, that might be more than somebody was willing, you know, and I certainly wouldn't speak, you know, wouldn't violate my conversation with Danny, but I mean, I don't know how you get to an end if you don't know what your goals are. I think he's still researching that and to before he was the option to tell us what our goals are and where we can go and whether we want him to continue. So why don't we give him time or call him and go talk to him?
And that's fine, but you're, you're saying he's stating the goals for the city council to be...
No, he's going to give us something to look at. We will still have the option of what we want to do.
Okay, but I may have misunderstood you. I thought you said...
I may have, but if you interpreted from what I have.
Okay.
I would encourage anyone that wants to, the Electric Plant Board meets tomorrow night, so I think it would be very beneficial to maybe everybody be there and just listen. You know, I don't, I've been placed down there, and it's been, you know, quite an education so far for me, but I think we all agree that, that there's much to learn, and we need to be, as the mayor said to me early on, fair, and I think we're trying to do that. So he was very, I was very nervous the first meeting that I went to, because that was the, I think, the night that they, we've had to vote on their lawyer, and that was first. So, you know, I almost needed a nitro pill that night, but, so we, we've got a job to do, and although we may have different flavors in it, we're trying to do the work for the people. And it's, it's a deep issue, and so I just appreciate everybody speaking, and tomorrow night at 6:00, come on down.
Mayor, I have a question. I need you to clarify. If you make an appointment for a board member, for us to vote on a board member to go on the EPB board, and we go into litigation and this board is found negligent of their duties and is dismantled, isn't that person that we appoint to that board going to be gone as well?
I'm not an attorney, but I would imagine that, that any charges that you all bring against the board would, would name individuals and not the board as a whole, so...
Okay.
One that would be appointed, I'm guessing from this time forward, would not be charged with any wrongdoing that takes place.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't need the nitro after them.
Right. Well, it's my understanding that, that it wouldn't be after Mr. Norris or whoever's the next appointed, it would be over the people during this process. So really, really you, or if we were to ever come to another agreement on somebody, those two people would somewhat be absolved from the board, I would assume, unless we voted against them.
Unless you named them in that, in that hearing, yes. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion to adjourn in second?
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. We are adjourned.